All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:05. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next will be the approval of the agenda. Do I have any additions, subtractions, issues?
Well, I can first make the motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Paul. All in favor? All right, is unanimous, where else? Thank you. Public input and announcements. Do we have any public ones to speak? All right, moving along, there will be no board discussion of public comments. Approval of minutes from November 16th. Do I?
Don't move, don't make that motion.
All right, from Liz. Do I have a second?
Sure.
From Len. All in favor?
We have to have discussion before we vote to approve this report.
That's true, you're right. So, any, yeah, you're right, no, thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Is there any, any discussion? Seeing none. All in, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? I was not present, so I will not, so, and myself and Sam. Student representative updates. Seeing.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, Dan, how are you?
There he is.
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well.
Well, me and Ms. Thompson and Cindy have been, we recently talked to the tenth grade advisories and got their feedback on the issues at the school and we're looking at what's to implement, the ideas. And as of yesterday, sophomores and juniors who took the PSAT tests have gotten their scores back. We took the PSATs in November, I think. And as of today, the student council had their first meeting today during flex with an attendance of 11 students. And they plan on meeting every first and second Wednesday of the month. I don't have any more input.
Thank you, we appreciate it, I wasn't sure if, we lost it for a second. All right, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, just a reminder, as we're discussing other items on the agenda, don't hesitate to jump in and give us your input on those two.
Yeah.
Thank you. So next would be the Mill River Science Social Studies update.
Do you want to start with social studies, is that?
Yeah, I think it's your stage here.
Oh, is it?
Okay.
And, and if you want to present from right around here, you can sit at the table at the end here, you can talk from right where you are.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for asking us here. We're, so I'm here to talk about the social studies department. My name's Peter C., I've been at Mill River, this is my 21st year I've been, so I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of kids come and go, but I've seen a lot of changes in our curriculum also. So, I don't have a whole lot here, I just wanted to talk about our, we've worked really hard in our department to talk about, to get, the, with the proficiency-based grading, our biggest, our biggest challenge was to get an academic progression where we were really hitting all of the inquiry, you know, the biggest thing for us in, in the social studies department, we have history, government, economics, and inquiry, along with transferable skills. And it's the inquiry that we really have spent a lot of time working on, we wanted to get a nice academic progression, seven through 12. And I feel we've been pretty successful with that. The issue that we're having now, as we're into our third or fourth year of this, is the opportunity for kids to pick up the proficiencies in, mainly in economics and also in the transferable skills areas. So, we have a great system for kind of eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th, and we need to, now that that first batch of kids is coming on to their senior year, we're looking for opportunities to offer kind of more economics. You know, we don't have a standalone economics course, we have a civics economics course where we, where we do some of the economics in there with the civics. But, so kind of, that's where we are, we're sort of short electives, it seems like, as we look down the road, that even this year, we have a bunch of younger students kind of taking senior, what used to be senior law, that we call civics and economics now. So, so that's where we are, in the, in the global citizenship department. So, we're, we're kind of, we have sort of, we sort of have a gap for performance indicators in economics, that's kind of where we are. But we feel, we feel good about the academic progression with the other stuff, so.
And I think something that Peter's getting at is something we've talked about when we've looked at budgeting and, and looking at high school and the number of teachers we have, the flexibility of scheduling, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you only have a certain number of teachers, you can only run a certain schedule, you can only have so many courses offered. So, say you had another social studies teacher, all of a sudden you could teach those electives, kids' schedules would look a little better.
Right.
Is that?
Or even a half a social studies teacher or something.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we're definitely down, one of our, I mean, there's three of us, Mr. Pluta's doing pretty much all drivers ed now, there's three of us, and even Mr. Greenfield does, he does a full section of middle school. So, so I like the way the classes are set up, I have some nice classes of 18, 20, 21 kids. But I'm just thinking, I see these kids and I'm thinking, we got it, what are we going to do when they're seniors? That's kind of where.
And, and the finance committee definitely had that conversation around what are the implications, you know, classes might seem okay, but you can't offer nearly as many things if that's the only thing you're looking at.
Yeah.
Peter, how many social studies teachers are there now?
There's one in the middle school, and in the high school, there's Mr. Latkin and me and Brian Greenfield, and that's it. And Brian, like, I think Brian's doing one full middle school course, and he also does a, he does a, yeah, so we're, yeah, we're kind of, yeah, because Pluta was doing a couple. I mean, we have a series of, of elective courses ready to go that we've taught in the past and are ready, are willing to teach again, we just haven't been able to fit into our schedule, so.
You heard, I think when the middle school was here, they were talking about, there were some skills gaps coming out of the elementary school.
Yeah.
Like, general, like, geography and things like that.
Yeah.
Does it seem like over your period of ti, like, you know, you've been here for a long time, does it actually seem like it's worse than it used to be, or, or does it feel like it's a ebb and flow kind of?
No, I, it's funny because you don't want to, I, for the first few years, you're, no, I'm just a crabby old social studies teacher, that the kids don't know who Christopher Columbus is, what's going on, and, but it's pretty noticeable now, it's pretty noticeable, just basic. And it's, it's, it's in the geography, but geography has always been kind of hit or miss, but it really, it's, it seems pretty noticeable, just some basic. I guess that would be my wish list, would be some kind of coordinated K through 12, you know, curriculum, which we have always looked at. But, yes, to answer your question, yes, it's from my perspective, yes, it's, there's definitely a knowledge gap. And I'll, you know, I openly, I ask them, you know, I have an honors class and I'll ask them openly, what can you tell me about Christopher Columbus? And they'll tell me a couple things, but they won't tell me, usually the idea, you know, he's looking for a shorter route to India or any of that stuff, that doesn't come, you know, that doesn't come out right away. And that's just, that's just one, you know, anecdotal story. But, yeah, to answer your question, I think, I think it's true, you know.
Do you have meetings with the social studies department, K-12?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't.
What about 7-12?
Yes, yes, but not as frequently, we have a lot of, I mean, we meet as a department, the high school kids, and, yeah, we do meet 7 through 12 occasionally, but not.
Is that maybe monthly?
Yeah, I would say monthly, that we actually meet as a, with the middle school and high school together.
I have a question as a follow-up. Do PLC times between high school, middle school, and elementary school teachers align in order that that work happen? Or could that be like an internship at the start or at the end of the year?
Sure, I don't know, but I can't speak for PLCs at the lower level, so. So, the times currently do not align for all of those things, and so right now, this year, we're focused on science literacy practices at the elementary school, and social, emotional, and advisory at the secondary. So, you know, because in the elementary schools, there aren't social studies teachers, every home, every classroom teacher teaches all the things. So, we have talked about how do we get better coordinated curriculum, and that is absolutely a goal, and I just want to back up the belief that we do need to coordinate K-12 better. One of those things is, we need to do all, everything, we need to do everything, and also we need to do it in a measured way, that we're not absolutely exploding teachers' already overworked brains. So, this year, the elementary schools, in their release daytime, have been working on coordinating science, and I have been working on getting grant funding for science materials and curriculum at the elementary school, which is not something that we've been able to support in the past, and global citizenship is also a need and a goal.
So I guess that would be my wish list, more electives and a K through 12, a little bit more coordination between them, that would be. Any other questions? That's it for me.
Thank you much, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Peter.
You're welcome.
Mike, Zach, you guys are on?
Yeah. So, Michael Gamash, I'm the new chair of the science department, thanks to my department members who nominated and elected me during my absence. Thanks, guys. I'm part of a five-member department, and that number may puzzle some people, but we have Mr. Nurney, who teaches middle school science, we have Mr. Byrd, who just moved and is now sitting next to me, who teaches both middle school science and ninth grade earth science, we have Mr. Robbins, who is not here this evening, who teaches chemistry and AP environmental, I teach biology and human anatomy and physiology, and the fifth member of our department is the 40-plus acres that we have around the school, that is essentially our outdoor learning space, that pretty much we can tie to every performance indicator across the science curriculum, right? And in our science curriculum, right, we have currently 19 different performance indicators spread out among earth science, biology, and chemistry. We are currently not offering physics, and we no longer offer AP bio because we've been squished, right? We're kind of maxed out in what we can offer, based on the number of teachers we had. We cut two science teachers about five or six years ago, and that impacted our ability to offer electives. As Mr. C. mentioned, it's not just global citizenship that is suffering from a lack of electives. On our, I guess before I get going, I'd just say that, like Vermont's, the sort of overall philosophy of the science department is kind of based on John Dewey, our own Vermonter, who basically said that education should be based on the lived experiences of individual learners. And that's what we try to do, is by providing meaningful experiences for students, and a lot of them are outside, but the ones that are inside are lab-based. And in terms of, it's difficult to measure growth with the current assessment system we have, but any parent knows that you don't need a number to tell if your kid's growing and on fire about something. When a kid hands in an awesome project related to biodiversity, and then you find out they're not doing any work for anybody else, you at least know that kid caught fire on that one topic, okay? But there's three things that tell us when students need support, and one is poor attendance. I mean, that speaks loudly that, you know, if a student isn't there, they're missing out, and it's, it's a little unsettling just how easy it is for kids to leave school. All they have to do is text home, and the next thing you know, they're dismissed. And so we see a lot of that. To try and support that or address that, we, we pretty much exclusively use Google Classroom so that if you are absent, you can at least find your work on Google Classroom. It's also pretty handy for us as teachers, because you can, you can look at their work and progress even if they haven't submitted it, you can see how far along they are in a process, because the second measure of kids that are in trouble, our assignment's not submitted. And if you go into Google Classroom and there's nothing there, well, you got to constantly remind the student, you know, this lab report, you know, is current, and, you know, we need to work on it, contact with parents can help. And then thirdly, it's the quality of work that they're producing, which you don't really need to measure it on a scale of one to four to know if a kid is writing a good lab report, you just simply need to read their hypothesis, or read their conclusions, and know whether or not they're able to explain something or not. Because with proficiency-based learning, and I say learning, not assessment, we made a shift away from memorization-type tests to valuing a student's ability to demonstrate their understanding by how they explain things. And you can tell just by reading a paragraph that a student produces, you know, the degree to which they understand, and that's what you can work with on a one-to-one basis. In terms of our wish list, we've talked about, and then I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Byrd, he'll talk more about what goes on in the middle school. But we have a hard enough time just knowing what each other is doing, because so much of our time together is prescribed and directed along other lines. There are things we talk about in regards to advisory, which essentially is 10% of a student's time in the school building, and I would argue that the valuable lessons that we are being asked to implement in advisory are the kinds of lessons that need to be implemented in every class, not in a special pull-out here, we're going to sit in a circle for 20 minutes and talk about this. That's the kind of engagement that needs to take place with every teacher, in every classroom, with every kid. And many of us start off the year like that. Getting to know our kids, because it's not enough to provide them with learning experiences, we need to know what matters to them. If a kid isn't a hunting, or fishing, or horseback riding, or music, we need to know that so that we can, we can touch those parts of their brain with stuff that we offer. So, we would like more time with each other to know what each other's doing, and we really need to know what science experiences students have had in the elementary schools, so that when they get here, we can touch on that. When I know what Mr. Nurney is doing in class, I can remind them, well, remember when you did this with Mr. Nurney three years ago, or what you did with Mr. Robbins two years ago in chemistry, okay? We're building a spiral in their brains by knowing where they're coming from and knowing what matters to them. So, I think we'll hold off on questions, because I'd like for you to hear from Mr. Byrd, who is our newest colleague, and we're really grateful to have him on board.
Well, I don't know if I.
I want to say one more thing, I missed two months for medical leave, and Mr. Byrd stepped into my position with a day's notice.
And, and I want to acknowledge that Zach has been with us for a long time, and he's taken on a new role, and many of us have been very pleased to see him take that role on.
Yes, so, I'm Zach Byrd, I've been working as a paraeducator here for, I think it was seven years before stepping into the teaching role. This is my first year operating under a provisional license while I complete the TAP program, so that's, that's something that I do.
And you run the rock climbing?
And I do the rock climbing, so that's, it's a lot. I'm pretty, I'll be honest, I'm pretty optimistic. I have a lot of energy, and I'm ready to do this. And I think the, the number one thing that I see is that students coming into my class are missing a lot of science pieces. They're missing so much, they, they really don't know how to conduct science. So when they come to my room, they're missing a lot of those, some of that general terminology that maybe they should have gotten in elementary school. However, on a positive note, everything that we do in the middle school is based on an anchoring phenomenon. And I, this is the coolest thing that I've seen in science teaching and been exposed to, because it wasn't necessarily that way when I was in school, all the time, it definitely was the case for some teachers, but not all the teachers. And so basically what that means is we have some phenomenon that happens, and we base all of the student learning off that one thing. So for example, what we're doing right now is the anchoring phenomenon is a cattle die-off, large cattle die-off in the Midwest that was brought upon, brought upon by essentially climate change. So we touch on a variety of concepts that are based on that. So our first unit is thermal energy, understanding how molecules react and how temperature works. And that is a really humbling experience when you have students that really are missing some of those crucial pieces, and you have, you spend a lot of time filling in those missing pieces. Because you can't, in science, you, you can't reach that next level of thinking without having that basic understanding beforehand. And I'll be honest, I don't know if you guys have ever looked at the NGSS science standards, but they are intense, they are a lot.
Many, many of them.
Okay? They are asking our students to do an incredible amount of thinking. And I would say, on a large scale, they're not there, they're not at that level of thinking. So it becomes, my main role is to get them thinking just, just in science terms, before I can even teach that material to them, you know, the content that we're trying to deliver to them, so that they can do all of the things that the NGSS standard is asking them to do. And so for example, I have this up here, let's see here. So, MSPS1-4, develop a model that predicts and describes changes in particle motion, temperature, and state of pure substance when thermal energy is added or removed. So, that is the, that's the evidence statement there.
Are we still talking middle school, Zach?
This is middle school science, by the way. And they're all like this, every single one of them is, is this level of understanding that a middle schooler is asked to reach. What I've seen in my classes and what I've been able to achieve is roughly maybe a two level of thinking on average. Being, being a new teacher and learning how to grade is, is something that is also very interesting. I'm very flexible with the grading, I, I set a certain standard that is somewhat close to the NGSS science standard, but I think if I were to be really, what's the word, nitpicky, I don't, I don't know how often our students would pass.
Because that's a very high bar, what you just read off.
In, in my class, I have students that are able to sometimes put into words, you know, what it might mean for particles to change state, and what it means, you know, what temperature means roughly. But they struggle to create that next level model which explains the concepts that you're putting into words. And that, that I see on a large scale in my classes.
Yes. Can I interrupt and ask a question?
Yes.
The next generation science standards, are those K-12 or 12K?
K's through 12.
Okay, so when you're talking about a specific standard for a middle school class, are there similar standards for the class below it, or the classes below it, that is just scaffolded differently for that age population?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, I, going back to the point of, we, we are coming, we have students coming in, especially with pandemic, you know, we can't forget about the pandemic, we have students coming into seventh grade at a fourth or fifth grade level. And I think as teachers, we do have to understand that, but we also can't perpetually keep this being a problem moving forward. We can't have, we can't have this generation of kids be two grade levels behind indefinitely. So, you know, because then you get to being a senior, but are you really a senior, you're still a sophomore. So, I, I guess that, where I'm going with this is that we need to have the resources, you know, we need to have the teachers, this goes back to saying, having another science teacher would be amazing. Personally, right now, I'm split between middle school and high school, that's an interesting challenge in and of itself, going from middle school brain to high school brain. It's fun sometimes, but we also are missing science electives, and we're missing physics teacher, and, so we are missing out on a portion of the science currently, and I wouldn't expect that to change right away.
And I think you're hearing a theme that we've heard from other folks every time we've heard from our schools, they know where their kids are, and they've got some really good ways to, Mike was outlining three ways he knows if a kid's struggling or not, and Zach's talking about exactly knowing how kids are approaching his standards. And they're meeting our kids where they are, and they're trying to do it in an engaging way. You're not hearing that everything's perfect, and everything's peachy, and everything's rosy, and you're hearing that they're doing the best they can with what they've got, but they're aware of how they can do that work, and they're telling you some things that they could use that would help support that work too. I know we haven't had questions for science yet, but I wanted to highlight that piece that we've heard from everybody else so far still.
I think I'd just like to add one thing, and that's it. We're grateful for this opportunity, having been invited to start this conversation, and we're hoping it can continue, not in this setting, but please note that you are invited to a science department meeting. You're also all invited to take a walk with one or more of us in the morning before school, 7 to 9 a.m., or in the afternoon after school, or even before a board meeting, or a buildings and grounds meeting. We have a wonderful environment outside that has dozens and dozens of places that you can bring a group to and create a lesson at that place. We planted almost 1,000 trees on campus in the last 10 years, okay, and they're starting to, to, to show. And that's just one of the many things that all of us do, we have one of the best birders I know sitting right there. Mr. Nurney really knows birds. Mr. Nurney really knows birds and talk, I can talk about birds with my students, and they remember it going outside. And I, this is only Mr. Bird's first year, but I know that in the near future, I'll be able to refer to things that he has done and kids will remember. So we really invite you to join us some morning or some afternoon or even some evening for a walk. An hour doesn't do justice to what we have out there, okay? There are, we have about a mile of trail. We have boardwalks through wetlands. We have a lot out there. It's a gem of a place. And at this point, there are probably only one or two board members currently who have been out there, right? So it's time to get you all out there at some point. So thanks for the opportunity to say what I wanted to say initially and forgot to say. Are there questions for any of us? You've got three fifths of the department here.
I have an observation, not just a question, but the span of, you know, things that we might add, that Brian has talked about, going from a few dollars per student at science level to adding a physics teacher, you know, that's quite a span. Given me something to think about. It seems to me that a few dollars for, you know, consumables in the classroom ought to be a no-brainer. That just should be, that just should be easy to happen, no matter what we do, because it's not going to impact the budget nickels and dimes.
You could probably $60,000, $70,000 make a huge impact across the entire district. One teacher could be $100,000 salary and benefits.
Right. I mean, the addition of a teacher, that's a real thing for us to talk about. Those nickel and dime things, that just ought to happen.
Tell the finance committee.
Yeah.
And apparently some new, you know, equipment as well.
So I'd like to say that I'm extremely optimistic about, you know, where we're heading. The fact that we're having this meeting at all, it gives me even more optimism. I am extremely optimistic about our administration staff. We've gone through a lot of change in the last couple of years. So I personally find that we're going in the right direction there in some regards. So I think now, having more support from the board when we are talking about things that we need, I think that's imperative. So when we, when the administration come to you or however it works, I'm not really sure how the process works, but, you know, if they say, hey, you know, we need, we need another science teacher, we need a science teacher to do physics, then it should, we should find it. If we, if students need supplies to conduct science, we should have it, you know? It's one of those things where I have a very different view of what public education might look like compared to other people. It's a larger umbrella that I view things should be covered. So, and that extends to extracurricular activities. So the fact that, you know, we don't necessarily always have what we need for teaching is a problem for me. There are a lot of really great free resources out there. Personally, in middle school, we use an awesome free resource in OpenSciEd, and it is awesome. Like, it's perfect. Right now, I don't have that at the high school level. It's just, it's being made, I believe, currently. I intend to use that in the future because of how great it is, but that's a wait time. So just having, having the board, having the school as a whole be receptive of the fact that we need these X, Y, Z, I think is crucial.
Any questions?
I just want to say that I'm really thankful because the faculty members that have come to speak with us, I feel, are speaking very candidly, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
And you are more than welcome to stay all night long, but you're more than welcome to go too.
Thanks for getting us in early. I thought we were at 7:55.
We tried, we tried.
Thank you.
Sounds like a lot to think about, and thank you very much.
Please join us at a department meeting or for a walk.
Sounds good. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving along, next would be equity update.
That's me. All right, so this is an annual update that is informed by the Board Equity Policy requesting that annually we just check in on how we're doing on our goals around equity. And so I just wanted to talk about a couple different buckets. So the first thing I want to talk about is Title IX. So Title IX is a federal law around prohibiting discrimination based on gender. Two years ago, the federal government added clauses to this law about sexual assault and sexual harassment that supersede our state law. We are experiencing an increase district-wide that is mirrored in the state around complaints of Title IX, sexual harassment. I do think it's important that the board understand that we are not allowed to use our state policy. We have to use the federal policy. The federal policy is very, very significant. It's the same policy for postgraduate students all the way down to pre-k kids. And it has 27 steps.
More than I could count.
And it can take up to.
More individuals involved than just a straightforward.
And it can take up to 90 days to do one investigation. And so that is currently a strain on some of our systems that support equity work. Now, we have been doing a lot of work to clarify that process and to train people in it. We actually spent some of our lawyer money. I created, because there wasn't a checklist that was procedurally laid out in a chronological order out there yet, so I created one of those, sent it over to the lawyers to get cleared. We have that, that's going to help with our training, and it should help with fidelity of that process. But that is something that we're working on right now. HHBs, that's hazing, harassment, and bullying, continue to be, you know, this, the state has a very clear policy and procedure on that, and I just want to say how much I support that policy and procedure because I truly do believe it helps us to better serve kids. And to, when it's used with fidelity, it is a powerful tool. We're seeing an increase so far this year at the elementary level of the need to use that policy around harassment. And we actually have not had a lot of cases at the secondary level. So Kalen and I have been meeting recently to look at why, right? So we don't think all harassment has ceased. So what are the combinations? Is it better? Are kids getting along better? Are kids not coming forward? If they're not coming forward, why? Are they, do they believe in our processes? So we're just kind of trying, currently looking into, and I don't have a good answer for you. It's probably a lot of different things, but we want to make sure that if we do have a process, that it's clear, it's accessible, and it's meaningful to kids.
And it would be really easy to say, oh, well, the number has gone down. We're doing a great job, pat on the back. So I want you to hear that we're looking past the number to try and see reality, not just make a number say what we hope it says. And I think that's important.
So we did do a lot of work the two years before this one and really looking with an equity lens at our curriculum. That is still important to us. It is not an explicit priority we focused on so far this school year. But we were able to move things in that way, in ways that I feel have been meaningful and balanced. Not to say that work, equity work is never done because we don't live in a, in an equitable society. But we're continuing to make thoughtful progress on that. We're continuing to look at ways in which to involve student voice in equity because we, we are a lagging indicator, right? So right now, at my newly 44-years-old, I do not know half of what our current concerns and needs are compared to my 10-year-old daughter. And so knowing that we need kid voices to really tell us how it feels and what is going on is really important. We have, we have a GSA here at Mill River. It is very, very small. And so that's another data point we're looking at is why is it small? It is likely not just because there are only two or three kids in the school that identify as a piece of that community. How do we work to make kids feel that they can access various systems for student voice around equity in meaningful ways? And that's just something we check in about at Equity Committee every month. We talk to school counselors about, we are trying different things. So one thing that the GSA leaders have done is to reach out to other more successful GSAs up north and say like, what are some best practices? They recently talked about what if we make a more inclusive name that can bring in different pieces of equity? So why don't we call it like a, you know?
It's Better Together.
Better Together. So it doesn't have to be just about this piece to broaden the label. And so they're looking at that right now. They are still doing their bulletin board that highlights different pieces of historically marginalized history every single month, so working on that. Another thing that we really focused a lot on last year and has been kind of smoother this year is the really interesting interplay of supporting students' gender identity and how that appropriately connects to parents' rights, informational systems, FERPA, and how to make students feel comfortable and also make parents feel invested. And so we have some pretty well-lined out procedures around that that seem to be working well. But again, this work's never done, so it's just about checking in when things aren't working well and seeing what we can do better with those, and about letting kids know that we have those systems. So overall, overall, we continue to know we have inequities in our systems. We know that we need to continue to work on those. We have not, as you've noticed, explicitly focused on equity as our professional development central theme this year. And that is not because it's not important. That's because of a lot of factors. You know, I speak a lot to you about we have to be doing all the things all the time. And so it's the hardest part about education, right? Because we cannot have our teachers doing 80 hours of professional development in addition to their jobs every single day. Right now, we're really focused on coordinating curriculum coming out of the pandemic. It doesn't mean we don't need to do equity work as well. It just means that that is right now the current piece. And then, you know, we're bringing on some school safety pieces to that right now. And then we're bringing on advisory systems because kids have more social emotional needs than we've ever seen before. And we're trying to infuse equity throughout all of that. We also sometimes will need to go back to looking explicitly at that lens.
And you didn't just hear that from Jody tonight. You heard that from our teachers. There's not enough time to do the things we need to do. And coordinated curriculum was something that social studies and science were talking about. We could absolutely use more time to do that work, even though we're trying to do as much of that work this year as we can. So I think, I think it's important to keep that in mind that we've got a heck of a lot of goals, and we've only got so, so much time, and at this point, so many resources. And as we wrap up some budget pieces, as we are thinking about bigger picture, longer-term strategic planning, we have to keep some of those things in mind. Just because we have a focus that might not be, you know, equity in big letters flashed up on the screen every day, we are doing the equity work. And as we coordinate curriculum, the better coordinated our curriculum is, the more students are going to succeed, and that's a piece of equity too. So I think it is, I just want to reiterate some of what Jody's saying and say it in a slightly different way, if that makes sense. Things to be thinking about as we set goals for the future.
If I could. The Equity Committee, is that the same as the Leadership Team or?
No. So we have had a district administrative equity committee. This is the sixth year of it.
Okay.
And so representation has changed throughout the years. It just tends to be a body of paraprofessionals, teachers, school counselors, and administrators that want to work together and look specifically at that lens. And so it meets generally once a month, a little bit less so far this year, but working on it. But yeah.
The other thing, I have in front of me here the Mill River Unified Union School District Three-Year Equity Plan, which Year Three was 2022, 2023.
Yeah, that's this year, and we have not.
Okay. And I'm just, all I'm saying is that, and understanding what Brian said about, you know, time constraints and all of that, I get all of that.
Right.
But I just think this can be updated because the way I heard you and what I see here is that the focus has changed. And again, that's not a criticism. I'm just saying it has. For example, there's nothing in this three-year equity plan about Title IX.
Right.
Okay? So I just, in my mind, it would be, and there's not very much about harassment and bullying either. It was, it's sort of, because I think when we started looking at this, it was how do we even implement the idea, the ideas of equity into the schools and into our faculty and staff? And so I think that was, again, this is just my opinion. I think that was the focus more so of this plan. So I just think we, it need, the committee needs to think about, and I don't know necessarily, that it necessarily needs to be a three-year equity plan, but a plan for the next year, and then a plan for the next year. Because I do think that's one of the things that you run into an issue with in a three-year equity, or a three-year plan, and that doesn't even matter whether it's equity or not, is stuff, I mean, stuff changes.
Yes, and that's, so that plan is no longer on the website because it does need updating, and I just haven't.
No, in X.
Yeah, and I, I'm not hearing judgment. I'm just, I also want to be open.
Yeah, yeah.
That it hasn't been updated yet, and that that is something that would be powerful for our Equity Committee to get to. And I think what I learned from that, like, looking back, right, is that I do believe multi-year plans are necessary. Like, when we talk about strategic planning and being intentional, I also totally agree that, looking back three years down the line, so much changed that any future multi-year plan I do will, will have explicit times written into it for edits.
Can I give a quote? Can I interrupt with a quote?
Yep.
Eisenhower said, "Plans are useless. Planning is indispensable." So I think that's what you're saying. Having that three-year plan was great. Well, now we've gotten to Year Three, I wonder if we're asking the Equity Committee to develop something? And I think you said maybe it's a three-year plan, maybe it's not, but what's next? So maybe hearing something a little more formal from the Equity Committee, is that?
Yeah, and you know, the Equity Committee is always trying to work too on what is possible within the scope of its practice.
Right.
As a body that meets 10 times a year for an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
And yet wanting to have meaningful work.
And maybe you can put something in here that provides for, again, the Title IX is something that just sticks out to me because the federal government comes along and says, you need to follow this. And that's, that wasn't anything, that wasn't in here.
Not that we saw coming, and so it's been added to, like, we've done staff trainings on it. It's been added to all our leadership team docs, but adding it to this document as well would have value.
Because I, and I know it's a lot of work. I do. So we'll keep at it.
And am I hearing that we maybe want something in the spring from the Equity Committee? You know, we will do annual report because the policy dictates we do an annual report, but do we want to hear something maybe six months from now? Like a mini-update? Is that reasonable?
I think, we, I don't know, you know, it's workload thing, but I think having some sort of, even if it's a plan for next, like, coming up is like, some sort of goalposts.
Yep.
Just to keep the movement going some, in some direction, you know? I think that would be helpful.
Oh, and you know what? It was, was an inclusion statement on that three-year plan?
Uh.
Because we did that.
No.
That was something we did, the board did this year.
Yeah.
So there you go. There's another thing that came up and wasn't on the plan, but we did.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, where are we going next? Do you think that's reasonable in the spring, Jody?
I think the other thing when we were talking about in policy was part of the, you know, addressing conflict. And so is there a way that's different from three years ago when a conflict occurs? Can you give me an example of what is different? Like, what would be a different?
Restorative justice?
Yeah, or, yeah. And just general, like, is, have we implemented any kind of change to how we're dealing with conflict?
So, yes, and there's still a long road to go.
Yeah.
So we went through all of the school handbooks with a lens on restorative practices, both last summer and the summer before. Over at Clarendon, the faculty meeting focus for the entire year is around positive behavioral interventions and creating a faculty collectively written handbook for explicitly teaching behavior. That then every single time they write something, Jane says, now let's go back with an equity lens and see where our blind spots are and what we've just written. So that work is being done. We have, we, we're spending the entire year here working on advisory because relationship building and having hard conversations and focusing on citizenship and peopling is
Yeah. And we're doing, we've implemented reentry meetings for kids for behavior issues so that we sit down and like, what do you need for support and things like that? All of our, like, anything consequence-based has the conversation of, okay, so what do you need? With a trusted adult, we have a behavior interventionist as of this year, and we're leaning heavily on that. Kids who have been, who have out-of-school suspensions, we connect them virtually with our secondary interventionists so they don't miss out on work, so that they can stay connected to, to people. Our attendance coordinator and EST coordinator, our attendance facilitator, coordinator and EST coordinator are doing frequent check-ins with kids, beginning of the day, end of the day, just to see how things are going. So just a lot of that relationship building. But yeah, the reentry meetings on behavior have been huge. We, our guidance staff are also doing mediations between kids with certain things, so, but both kids have to agree to that obviously before that happens, so.
And then I would just add one more piece. So we had really wanted to focus a lot of release day work at the secondary level on assessment this year, but the behaviors have, kids dysregulation, I'm not going to call it behaviors, kids are so dysregulated at a greater number of kiddos and at a greater need than we anticipated this year that we've decided that the last three release days we have with secondary staff this year, we actually sent Karen Standard, the Assistant Principal, to get certified in CPI training. And so she'll be doing verbal de-escalation training with the entire Mill River faculty for the last three release days. And so that is a really specific explicit training for how to use a trauma-informed restorative lens with dysregulated students. And we've never, I mean, never trained an entire school in CPI since I've been here. But that's, you know, that's that constant balance of we need to be working on this and also this, 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 and this. And where is the greatest needed any given time without giving teachers whiplash?
And, and are we doing it perfectly everywhere? No. Is it a work in progress? Yeah. Any questions?
Trying to think if we had any other questions from when we were looking at it in policy, but I think part of it was just like, oh, we are supposed to be looking at, we are supposed to have this report.
Well, and, and great that we have some of those things built in to draw our attention back to them so that we can maintain a focus.
Thank you. Moving along to substitute teacher, substitute para educator pay rate proposal.
And I don't know if Stan wants to jump on and chime in. I see him there. If he doesn't, I will. See how fast he can find that mute button.
I didn't get my present.
Oh, Stan's here in person! Yay!
What a turn.
The Department Leader came out with a minimum wage rate for January 1st, which is, I'm keeping my glasses on.
13 cents, isn't it?
Which will be $13.18 per hour. So our para-professional daily rate is currently 95. They work a seven-and-a-half-hour day, and that would be a $12.67 an hour rate currently. So we need to boost that up to get it up over the minimum wage for January 1st. So we are asking the board to make a motion to set the para-professional subrate at $100 effective January 1st to be in compliance with the minimum wage rate for Vermont.
I'll make that motion.
And one second?
Sure.
Len, second. Any discussion on it?
So we rest, like, so this year, we're going to spend about $16,000 on subs? Is that right? I don't know if, I'm just trying, I was trying to look it up quick to see like, what's the total amount that we spend on?
The total, total budget for subs is probably about $212,000, somewhere around there. Last year, the last couple of years, we spent around $200,000. We're, we're at a good pace right now because we have, last couple of years, we've had long-term subs. I don't think we currently have any right now.
There's one posting out for a long-term sub currently.
Yeah, so that would be for half a year. So I think last year, we might have had them for the full year, so. So we're in good shape with that currently.
And just for like, like when we're talking about, because we just had a conversation and one of the topics was substitute pay.
Yeah.
And so I would be interested, not necessarily for this vote, but maybe in the next time we come to a budget meeting, of just saying, what would happen if we increased the pay to above just making minimum wage? That's all. That's all. That's my only comment.
How much of an issue is, is getting subs right now?
That's the bigger issue.
I, I know it is for other places.
Yeah.
How much we had for a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Now, is that from a lack of pool, you think? Or is that from the lack of pay? Like, there's just not people out there doing it or?
We've stayed fairly competitive in the region. You know, we, we maybe haven't been out front, but we've kept an eye on that and we've brought things to the board over the last several years. I think it really is just the pool. And you, you catch a lot of people coming in, Pam, wanting to be subs.
It can be both.
Yeah.
I mean, making just over minimum wage, I mean, subs deal with a lot. And so knowing they're coming in with that, you're less inclined to come in for it, or you come in for a day or two, have a negative experience, and then that's it. And, and a lack of pool, it's nationwide, but it is a very big struggle.
And we've had that problem pre-pandemic, you know?
Okay.
It's gotten worse for sure, but we struggled to have subs before the pandemic.
It, it used to be that a large number of subs were former educators.
Yep.
And I think they're tending not to want to come back and substitute.
Yeah, I think you're right.
You know, they're, they're sort of, and I'll speak for myself, you know? But, but I think that's a fact as well. So I think it is the pool.
Are teachers working as teachers longer now than they used to? Oh, so you didn't know what the, see, can't answer.
No, I know, I know.
Like, did teachers used to retire earlier than they do now?
No.
Or do, it's still pretty much, you get to a point?
It's actually later, because now what's, what is it, the, you have to have the numbers?
Yeah, rule of 90 is the rule of 80.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's actually later. They have to work longer.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. So yes, they're retiring later.
Each plus years or so.
Yeah. So instead of having somebody retiring at 60 or 55, that's a much, like, who want, if you're, you know, if you're five years out and you're 70, I don't know how many people want to come in and deal with teachers.
Yeah.
I, you know, I think the job has changed a heck of a lot in the, I don't know, 15, 16 years I've been in education. It's, we are, we are not just teaching kids. We're providing a lot. And I think it, it's a harder job. It is.
The whole technology piece has changed education as well. You know, the, the Science Department was talking about using Google Docs and, and that, you know? Which, who the heck did that?
Yeah.
You know, so, so that's a challenge for some folks.
A sub can't come in and do all that stuff necessarily. A sub comes in and there are handouts, you know? So it's already a lower quality of education, not, not saying anything bad about subs. But they don't come in and have access to our systems and our programs and our computers, you know? It's just a different ballgame. Yeah.
Well, I know, I got to pay more than minimum wage to keep an 18-year-old
Yeah.
from quitting.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And I think our challenge is, you know, we have, we just did really good work to bring our support staff to a better wage. We can't pay our subs higher hourly rates than our support staff. So there's always that, you know? If we wanted to do a really great job with subpay, we might have to look at our salary schedules, if that makes sense.
It's just going to keep snowballing on us.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we're right back to budget conversation of every year, it's going to go up. And here's why. If we want to retain staff, we have to pay a good wage. So that's just discussion, right?
Yeah, now we can vote on it.
All right. So we do have a first, we do have a second. All in favor? It looks unanimous. We're good. You got a follow-up, right?
There's a second part to this at the board. We would like the board to make a motion on, and that is the teacher daily subrate. Now, that's above minimum wage, but we try to keep a gap between the teacher rate and the, and the para rate so that we have a decent enough difference between the two. So we're asking, currently that rate is 110. We're asking effective January 1st to move the teacher's subrate up to $115 a day, which is not a
I'll make that motion as well.
Have a second?
Second.
Second from the floor. Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous again?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, when we get to transact other legal business, I have to be given authorization to sign pay orders and stuff.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. Moving along to committee reports. Personnel.
Hey there. We did not have a personnel committee meeting tonight because we had the budget meeting. However, we do have a couple of personnel matters that we need to take care of. One is coaches, high school coaches and middle school coaches and elementary coaches for winter sports, I believe. Let me just double-check here. Now, instead of going through each of them individually, because there's a bunch, I would like to make a motion that we accept the coaching list submitted by Kim Minieri for high school, middle school, and elementary coaches for the winter season.
I'll second that.
What are we voting on here, Len? Is this dollars or is this?
Yeah, it's their contract. It's their stipend.
Okay.
That, that, which really
And you've looked at it, so I trust you are comfortable.
When you look at it, it's not very much.
No. You must be
And for, folks, depending on how new you are to the board, you might not know that we actually have a matrix that looks at the level of the sport, the years of experience. So those dollars come from a schedule, so to speak.
Yeah. That way, basketball, for example, there's more practices, there's more games than there is baseball. So.
And that list was sent out of the board. We won't have it.
Yep. Yep. And then there's one other position for
Did we vote on that?
I did the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're at discussion, weren't we?
Yep.
Okay? All those in favor?
Yeah, Bruce's hands up.
Yeah, that is. Okay. Uh, no abstentions. Okay, we're good. So we have a custodian.
Yep. And unfortunately, the custodian that we brought to the board last time never followed through. Signed a contract and all that, but then we didn't get final paperwork and we stopped hearing from him, unfortunately. We do have somebody else that we've been working with to get set up. You'll see that there's hourly on here. He is waiting to have a contract to be able to give his current employer notice, which I think when we have people that do that, that's always a wonderful thing because we want them to do what's right by their current employer. We don't have a salary number because we don't know what his actual start date's going to be. Because he's going to sign his contract, he's going to give notice, and then we're going to sort that out. So if folks had a question about why there was no salary on there.
So I would make a motion to offer, and I don't have the contract in front of me, Brian.
Joshua Stiles.
Okay. Joshua Stiles, contract for custodian. Correct?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? opposed? We're good. That is all I have. The next personnel meeting would be scheduled for January something, first Wednesday in January before the, January 4th at 6:00. And we'll keep that tentative because if we, if we need another budget meeting, I mean, right now, we're not doing a whole lot of personnel stuff.
And had we also talked about doing shorter meetings if we only had like one or two things like a 6:30? Okay. I'll touch base with you, Len, when we get closer.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay? That's all I have.
Moving along to policy. F-13, first rescind notice. F-14 and E-12, first reading.
The F-13 is just the administration of resident students. That doesn't need to exist anymore because it's a state defines what a resident of the student is. The other two are just, we're just updating the dates. We didn't make any changes to the policy. We just wanted to update the dates on them so that we can say we did look at them. And just, we're going to do that. We hadn't done that on a couple of the ones we already looked at, and then we decided as a committee that we should just go through the process just to get the num, the dates updated so that people in the future will know that they at least were looked at.
Yep.
And then maybe we can make smart choices about what we keep going, keep revealing. Do we have to do, we would probably do the, two of them in two different, or can we do them all together as a motion?
I think you need to rescind it.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Well, then I'll make the motion to rescind F-13 for its first rescind notice.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
All those in favor? Great, everybody? And then what do we, what's the word for first reading? Do you just say?
You know, and I, I wonder if these ones, if we're going to, if we're going to make a motion to set them for second reading at our next meeting? Is that, does that make sense? Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Because that's what we would do next meeting, we would do our second reading, then we would move to approve. So if it's a motion to accept them for second reading?
Okay, we'll do that.
And I'm not normally paying attention to policy, so.
[laughing]
That's my best guess.
Or do we do any, do we make a motion?
Yeah, do, do we need to, if no changes have been, and I don't know.
I do believe we need board action to get it on to second reading. Because then we'll post it in the paper, we've already got it scheduled. So if everything, if we post it in the paper, we've already got it scheduled, so if everything, if we approve that for second reading, yeah, I think that's what it is, approve for second reading.
I was just wondering whether you needed it at all.
Now that I say that, it sounds like something I've heard at way too many board meetings.
Because if all we're changing is the dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, we still have-
Approve for second reading.
Yeah, okay.
Then it goes in the paper, then the public knows, yeah.
Okay.
Even if we change nothing.
So that's the motion, what he said. Sorry again. Any discussion? No. All right, all those in favor? We're good, everybody?
Thank you.
And there's a meeting at some point.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Because it's already scheduled.
Perfect. Next Tuesday it is. All right, buildings and grounds.
Nothing really new. I had a talk with Tim the other day, he was trying to get a computer to work, which just delighted me, but he was doing some pictures for some of the things that we get, so that was kind of rough. I'm only, I got a thought in my mind that we may be looking to put in some, some tire in this coming year, and there's only about four, maybe five spots that are probably size of a basic chair that we could actually do on a part basis as opposed to the whole thing. There may be other ones, this was in the main line coming in, the main driveway. There may be something over at the students' spot, but I think the staff here we have, behind us, is in really good shape there. I'll talk with him again, maybe we'll get started one more, another time pretty soon. Everything seems to be pretty docile and pretty okay, and Tim's not in trouble of anything, he's not sweating like crazy, so he must be happy with what he's doing.
He's working hard, yeah, he is.
He seems like he is. He seems, I haven't talked to him only once in the time since he'd been, he'd been, I would say hired, put to work. We'll try to do that again some other time soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to community engagement.
Yeah, we will meet December 13th at six-thirty convo, and yes, I will forward along the agenda, that's for, sorry, I think my brain is taking up much by a crossover episode that will allow me to really put a plug in for this budget season and holding forums for that, so that is, I think, the biggest way any of us can engage with our community right now is to have, come out to that and to be at those. So that is just super important. We have the one tonight, always great to hear from folks, and be it a formal meeting like that, or just people, that's what I'd like to use my little bit of soapbox for.
Yeah, and almost, almost all of you were there, which is great. You know, we had a lot of people there, which is awesome.
Thank you. Liz, finance.
Good evening, everybody. We have the following payroll and pay orders for approval this evening. For payroll, we have regular payroll dated November 18th in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. We also have regular payroll dated December 2nd in the amount of six-hundred-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and five cents for a grand total of one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents. For pay orders from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and one cent. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of seven-hundred-and-ten dollars and sixty cents. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars, and from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for a grand total of three-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. And I do move that we adopt and accept and approve all the things, sorry, I'm sorry. This payroll and pay orders as presented. A second. Oh, sorry, I'm not looking at the screen, and I can't see Doug. It's Doug. Any discussion now, considering, except Doug and Len? Any discussion, folks?
Two of us, huh?
All right, Karen, all right, thank you so much. None? All those in favor of approving payroll and pay orders as presented, please, hands and words, aye. Aye. Thank you very much, folks, and thank you to everybody who attended this evening's forum. Brian, Stan, and I are available for, to field questions if anybody has questions, and we have a regularly scheduled meeting of the finance committee on Monday, and my phone calendar is funny, but it is Monday, I can't, I can't see it, and it's at six P.M., so there is a hybrid option, and I hope you'll listen.
What's the date?
Twelve.
Monday is the 12th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to transact other legal business.
So motion to authorize Matt to sign contracts and pay orders.
Second?
Second from Josh.
Oh, wait, who made, I can't make the motion. Who made the motion? I'll make the motion.
Who wants to second it?
Sure.
Len's going to second it. There you go. Any discussion?
That was smooth, Brian.
Trying to, trying to stay in my lane. All in favor?
It's unanimous, we're good. Any other legal business to, all right. So agenda building.
So we had attached our yearly schedule there because I think we were going to have a little conversation around, do we want to pause during the more treacherous travel months? If we pause during the more treacherous travel months, so say we don't go onsite January, February, maybe, we likely won't hear from everybody twice. So if we heard from science today, and that was great, and you're not concerned about hearing from science again near the end of the year, we heard from Clarendon when we were out there in the fall, but we probably wouldn't hear from Clarendon again, if you're comfortable with that, I think we can make that adjustment.
I am opposed to that.
Okay, fair enough.
Just because of, I think, and I don't know, because I'm a teacher, I've never been a teacher, but it's like, having them talk to us seems like it's a good way for us to connect more and make decisions, and so, but that's just me, and I drive in treacherous weather.
They all, all the teachers that come and speak to us seem like they enjoy being heard.
Yeah, right.
So, but I think it's-
It's more about location.
Right.
Well, but I, I think the only way we could accomplish that is we would have to have a string of Mill River meetings during the winter months, then we just wouldn't have as many available times to go to schools and hear from people. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I think part of the problem is that, that the, like, not going, being like, teachers, you have to come to Mill River, but we're not going to drive to Clarendon, is not exactly what I would like to-
My assumption was we wouldn't do that.
Right.
We could, but I don't know that that would be, Tinmouth teachers come to Mill River, yeah.
And then also, the flip side of that is that if it is a bad night, and we have to go to Tinmouth, per se, and then, you know.
Well, you know, we cancel things.
Cancel, just say it's not-
We definitely cancel meetings when weather's not great. I think some-
But after all, we are Vermonters.
Yeah, we are.
And it is fifty-five degrees outside today, December 7th.
This is true, times are changing. And I think other board members were thinking the hybrid option in the winter would be great, but if we go onsite, we don't have hybrid option. But if folks are comfortable with staying schedule as is, I'm totally comfortable with that, too.
And I'm fine with being outvoted on that opinion.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I'm siding with you on this one, so.
Okay.
You got one person in your corner.
Sounds like, oh, I'm going to drive up the street during the winter, let's do it.
Yeah. I'll do it.
I mean, let's be honest, when there's a snowstorm, don't be all there's a mountain anywhere.
I found this road real good, just because it's cool, man, I'll say, I live on it for a reason.
Okay, so if we leave things as is, and there's no reason we couldn't revisit in January if we absolutely really wanted to, we have draft budget on the agenda next time, as in a proposal, because we will have finance, and we will walk out of finance with a proposal. So we will bring the draft budget proposal to the full board, which puts us, I think, in really good shape on schedule for that. We've packed a lot in this fall.
What's the day of the month?
Twenty-first, December twenty-first.
Yeah, it's going to be a little close, but it, a lot of us are not much later than that, we'll be happy.
Then sports on the agenda, too. We have Kim coming quarterly, so this would be the second sports update, and Kim tells me that Brittany, our elementary A.D., can come as well. We have, we could offer student reports again because we'd be here. We are doing two in a row here. I can put that on tentatively and reach out and see if the student reps want to give an update.
Dane's right there.
Yep. Oh, Dane, you could chime in, too, if you think you'd like the opportunity or not at our next meeting to speak as well. Totally up to you.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the twenty-first?
Yes, the twenty-first. And the last thing on my mind is a update on strategic planning and surveys, because I should have data from staff, community, and students, so that I can give the board a high-level overview, and we can talk about, when are we going to sit down and start picking up our strategic planning again? Yes, budget has been super important. Yeah, Liz?
Do students have school on the twenty-first?
Yes, they do.
Why don't we give the students a break and let Dane go on vacation, and we'll do our strategic planning?
Totally comfortable with that, unless the student reps really, really, really want to, I'm totally comfortable with that.
That'll be okay.
Yeah. Okay. Am I missing anything that we need to have for agenda building?
So what are we going to do?
Budget, sports, strategic planning update.
Oh, okay.
All right, moving along, executive session.
We do need one, and let me find that language. It's a contract conversation, so we need a motion for a specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Come on.
Second. All in favor?
Now you got to vote.
Now we need a motion to go in.
Yep, you're right, Len.
Yep, so I need a motion to go on.
Go on.
Second. Getting used to that, that's cool. All in favor? And we're good again?
Okay.